We all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I want to welcome everyone to the regularly scheduled lower going to Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, April 11, 2023. The board did meet an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss litigation and personnel matters. First up, public comments on any items not on the agenda? Seeing none. There we go. Next up, we're going to welcome Gwinnett Mercy Academy High School to give us a presentation on their land development.
Good evening. Kristen Pianzio from Hamburg Rubin Mullen Maxwell Lupins. Nice to see you. I'm here with Robert Jordan from Woodron Associates and Denise Marbach, the president of the Board of Gwinnett Mercy High School for Girls. We come to you requesting your consideration of an addition to the high school. It's a 20,000 square foot addition. We have submitted a land development application. We appeared before your planning commission on two occasions. We went first with review letters from the township consultants and from the county. We had site meetings with the fire marshal onsite with McMahon relative to traffic issues. We went back to the planning commission, discussed the results of all of that, had a robust conversation and are here tonight in front of you with their recommendation for approval. We resubmitted plans to get even cleaner letters, which we do have from McMahon and from Gilmore and Associates, and think that we are ready now for your consideration for preliminary and final approval. On the screen, you'll see what is proposed. It's a 20,000 square foot addition. Note that this is to deal with the existing needs of the high school. This is not for an increase in enrollment. The students are in need as their education evolves. There's a wellness curriculum that needs space. No longer are we dealing with just classroom activities, but the mind and spirit, mind, body and spirit. Right now they're camping out on the floor or double using the art room and they could use some designated space. So we need congregation spaces. We are redoing the cafeteria and providing some counseling space as well as storage. One of the building maintenance guys is now in the boiler room and we're hoping to give him his own office. So that's part of the project. As you look at the plan from Sumney Town Pike, the addition is proposed to the right. And I can give you a summary of what the concerns were by your consultants in the planning commission and how we've dealt with them. Let's see. The fire marshal was concerned that the high school is old and the original construction has asbestos, or I'm sorry, it does have asbestos, but his concern was the fire sprinkler system, which is missing out of this building. The current codes require a sprinkler system, a fire suppression system, which is proposed in the addition, but he wanted us to get a little sharper with our pencils and come up with a way to retrofit the existing building to try to address the fact that it does not have a fire suppression system. So we worked with him and came up with a plan. His memo that you have in your packets states that he is satisfied with the plan and the schedule that we've come up with. He was also concerned that sidewalk connections be added to the plan. It does work. Does it work on that one? No, it works up here. So there are exit doors on the side of the building. He asked us to add sidewalks to bring children out of the building to a congregation space in the event of a fire. So we added that on this side of the building as well as out of the addition to wrap around and bring the children a paved sidewalk to get them over to the parking area. That was his second concern. And thirdly, he was concerned about a remote hookup for water, like a standpipe. And you can see in his memo that he is satisfied with our resolution of that. He asked that those pages and those memorandums be made part of our plan set, which of course is a will comply. Chad Dixon, who's here tonight to speak otherwise, had concerns about the driveway. There's a driveway, as you all know, off of Evans. We could not find a PennDOT permit for that driveway, but Chad was satisfied with the site distances from the driveway up and down on Evans. He asked for a note on the plan to make sure that we maintain those site distances and not alter them, all of which is agreeable to us. He did ask for some stop bars and some paint, which we will obviously comply with. There is parking along Riley's Way, which comes in off of Evans. It's parallel parking along the side. We've agreed to get rid of that. Once this school year is over and the addition is built, we won't have to. Oh, there they are. Thank you. We won't have to utilize those parallel spaces. So this will open up this area for ingress and egress and fire safety. Because we're not planning on an increase in enrollment, McMahon recognizes that a traffic impact study isn't necessary and that there's no fee appropriate. The Gilmore review, which you have, the latest review, has some cleanup items, all of which are will comply. Just a couple of things to do with the plans and contains the waivers, which is really the subject of the conversation this evening. And if it's okay with you, Madam Chair, I could go through those waivers?
Okay. First, anyone on the board have any questions at this point? Please proceed. Oh, you do?
Sorry. So are you going to talk about the lack of trail connection on the property? I saw that was an issue with the planning commission and our local planning committee?
Yes, I can address that. There was a lengthy discussion with the planning commission about our waiver request for sidewalks along the road frontages of Evans and Sumney Town. The planning commission recommended them. One of the planning commission members felt strongly about it. The others understood our position, which is this. The high school is a private high school for girls. We do not want to introduce the public onto the property. That's one of the reasons why sidewalks are not proposed along Evans and Sumney Town. Secondly, there is existing vegetation along those frontages, in particular on Sumney Town. Not only do we have trees, but there's fencing that would need to be removed and would be interfered with to have a perimeter connection. And thirdly, there is an extensive trail system, which cuts through the high school property and through the university, as you know, meanders through the entire property and even cuts across and connects to the township park of Trewellin. So those were the reasons why we've asked for the waiver and we'd like to utilize the existing pedestrian connections that traverse the property. It abuts it, which is safe enough for us without bringing strangers and unwelcome public people onto the campus itself. But thankfully, with the university is next door and those trails are open to the public.
Okay. I'm not so much concerned with the sidewalk issue. I was just more interested in the setting aside of in connecting trails, the township trails, but you're saying that that is going to be remediated?
I'm not sure I'm following it, Tessie.
So I saw in the minutes from the planning commission that there was concern that the the trails be connected across the property. And I don't know what trails are there because I don't usually utilize the trails, but I just wanted to understand if that was going to be addressed. Are you asking for a waiver to not?
We're asking for a waiver for the sidewalks along the frontages, recognizing that there's already a trail system that is connected to the high school through the university property. We did have some pedestrian connections that the fire marshal asked for, those sidewalk connections. But you can see there's this internal drive that comes through. I think it's listed as Rododendron Drive. It does pick up right here. It used to be traversed by vehicles, but now it's pedestrian only. It's blocked off here, but it connects the school campus property, the line of which is right here, through and down through the university property, and then finally connects to the township park.
So you're saying that there is an existing trail system that allows people to traverse the property?
Correct.
Okay, that's all.
Okay, great.
And what was the proposed? Where are the proposed connections that you're asking?
A waiver? Along Evans, the frontage along Evans, if you were? Is there another sheet, Jamie? The corner up there, that's great. This corner here is still owned by the Sisters of Mercy. So this is not part of the high school campus, this little cutout. So the trail waiver is along Evans, along the property frontage, and then along Sumney Town from this driveway here. But as you walk through the entrance on from Sumney Town, you can traverse through the entire campus, through the existing trail system that cuts through the property, but the waivers for the road frontages.
Doesn't that kind of cut against the safety issue?
Well, they're existing and it skirts right along the edge, as you can see here. This is the property line, this hard line.
Isn't that the back of the school?
Is it front?
Or is that the front of the school where the trail goes in front of there?
Right here?
Where's the trail?
Here's the entrance on Sumney Town with the traffic signal. You come through here, you can go.
This is the roadway, right?
It is a roadway and then it's cut off to vehicles and then it's only pedestrians right about at this point. And then it goes through along the edge. There's a connection to this ball field and then it goes down, zips around, and then cuts back through the university and all the way across to Trewellin.
Can you show us, just to orient myself, where's Juliet Ball Auditorium? Do you know where that is on here? The Juliet Ball Auditorium? Do you know where it is?
Do you know where that is?
Is that it up there? Not it.
Are you saying Juliet Hall?
Ball. Is it called Juliet Ball on the university campus?
Yeah, like is it not shown here at all?
You can do it.
Follow Rododendron Drive.
That's what I was going to say. It's not shown here at all.
There you go.
Okay. But the trail leads right to it. So the trail, like Rododendron Drive? All the way over here? Okay, I'm just, I was just trying to orient myself to help.
Where would it be on here? Or there's some? Yeah. Okay.
Here's the Crowley facility. Here is the Mercy Hall. I don't know what Juliet Ball is.
Okay.
Ms. Pianza, are there sidewalks on the university's property along Sumney Town, like approaching the the high school's campus?
From the other direction?
Yeah, coming towards.
Like with Whole Suit Foods from my back?
Right.
Head it up as if I was going to go right. Hang on one sec, I'll tell you. Isn't there a trail? I kind of remember a trail in front of the pine trees along Sumney Town there.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So if, so if, I guess I'm trying to figure out if the waiver was not granted and sidewalk, or at least a portion of the request was not granted, and there was a requirement that sidewalk continue down Sumney Town Pike, would that, would there be a connection there with sidewalk or no?
No, it would stop at the Sisters property here. So it would only be this section right here. That's where our waiver is. But to your point, the trail's here and goes down along the frontage.
There's.
You're also, there would also be a trail up on Evans as well that you're asking for a waiver from?
Yes, along the Evans frontage, yes.
And are there sidewalks on Evans?
No, no. So it doesn't go anywhere.
Because I would think, I would think it would be safe.
Trail to connect?
What? There's no, there's no trail on Evans.
I mean, isn't the trail supposed to connect to something on the other? I mean, on what? I understand on the Sisters of Mercy end, it won't connect to anything. How about the other?
No, you get to, along this frontage, first of all, let's start here. Along this section of Evans, this is the spectator area for the ball fields. So that's why we're not proposing any plantings in that area and the trail would go through that as well and disturb that that visitor area here. So this would be the trail waiver from here. You get here, this is a culvert. So there's bridges on both sides. If you recognize, there's what do you call it? Barriers, you know, the guide rails on either side here because you have to go over this and then up here. And here's another one.
There's no trail up on Evans Road, is there?
Correct. There's nothing on either side.
What's the distance between the ball field and the tree? Just approximate.
You mean the entrance drive?
Yeah, you said that's the spectator area?
This here, yes. This is where the spectators hang out to watch the games.
So what's, what's about that? Just ballpark?
I get bothered to do it.
Twenty feet.
Just to clarify again, the waiver that you're requesting is that just this portion of Evans and then where else?
And then this section from Sumney Town right here.
The Sisters of Mercy section.
No, this part. So then here's this, this is the Sisters of Mercy parcel.
Yeah.
So it's from here, this is a property edge to here.
Okay. And so that dark black line is the trail.
This dark back black line is the property line between the high school and the university. So this is the high school property, but the trail that's there now hugs it. Yeah, it goes, goes right up next to it. Yeah, right along there. And then goes down in here. So our point was, there's already an extensive trail system available for the pedestrian connections. And we would have, this is heavily wooded. This would all be disturbed in order to put any kind of trail system here. And the entrance, once you get to the Evans entrance, you're, once you're on the university campus, you can have access to all the trails.
Right.
Yeah, you can't get there. Well, yeah, there are, I won't deny, these people who live on Evans do not have a trail system to get them onto the university campus. They could just walk across the street and get on the campus.
Right. And they don't have sidewalks on Evans, do you?
Understood.
So it's not really a safe way to access the trail unless you go onto the campus first?
Well, I think what the planning commission came to understand was that there's already an extensive trail system available and there are going to be parts in the township where it doesn't make sense to rip out a lot of trees and extensive vegetation to add in sections for a couple of houses. And I think they saw the value in that, that there's already a significant investment for pedestrian connectivity, just not along every edge.
Yeah, I just think in, in sort of future planning, if the goal is to make more connections, you know, it would be safer for the girls at the high school if people were walking on the outside perimeter on a sidewalk or a trail rather than getting so close to the campus with the existing trail. So I'm just thinking in the future, that's why I was wondering if there were other sidewalks that they, or trails that they could connect to on the outside. You know, so it's not encouraging people to come closer to the campus. Well, if we put the trail along the campus edge, we are having people walking on the campus property adjacent to where they recreate. So that is not ideal for the safety concerns of the high school. They don't want to invite people.
They're there.
Yeah, but it's safe enough away.
But I have to tell you, that argument kind of rings hollow because they literally, there's a trail open to the public right in front of the school. I mean, I hear what you're saying, but if there were no trails, I get it. But there are trails.
Well, I guess the counterpoint is, there's enough. There's enough there. It's on the edge. To add more to then circle the whole campus with walkability and pedestrian access is not ideal.
It's sort of, it's sort of what we're looking to do. I mean, it's ideal with what Montgomery County is trying to do and it's ideal with what we're trying to do to make the township more walkable. So I understand what you're saying, but that it is one of our goals. I understand it may not be your goal.
I understand.
But it's one of our goals.
And, and one of the conversations that we had with Al, with the sprinklers was, and even with the planning commission, is the budget constraints, obviously, to put that trail in along that extensive of frontage, to take those trees down and then replace them, build a bridge over that culvert. We're talking about hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. So for a 20,000 square foot addition, it's just not something that we can do.
That argument I understand.
That was.
I'll give you four. You pick the one you'd like.
I'm not sure I like any of them, but I understand that one better.
It's a lot more easily digestible.
But I, but I understand.
Right.
My only point was it exists. It, this is what exists today.
Well, and if we're, if we would like walkability along Sumney Town in the future, if that's, you know, something that the township would want, I think that if people are using that trail that is created along Sumney Town, maybe there's less people using the trail internal to, you know, and adjacent to the, the high school. So that was my thought where, when I was sort of trying to articulate why it would be safer, because if more people use that, that's just abutting.
You would direct them other to other areas.
And if the goal, that's why I wanted to know if there's a sidewalk up there. Cause if the goal is to really make a connection along the whole Sumney Town Pike.
The house there, the Sisters' house is right on the road. It would be hard to put a sidewalk there.
Right. I mean, the totally agree with you. But again, if we're planning for the future, I, I'm going to just assume the Sisters will always own that property, but they might not. And where they might want to develop. And if they develop it and we have the opportunity to put it, now we would be able to connect the two trails, but we're not going to be able to do that if we grant it. Again, I understand what you're asking for. You want to get your 20,000 square foot addition project moving. And we want to help you move it along. I mean, you're a great citizen of the township. We're happy to have you along. But our plan is longer range. We want to make sure that at some point, we can have a trail system that works. And if we have the opportunity to start that now, even knowing that we can connect it, we won't have that opportunity if at some point Sisters of Mercy want to develop that property for something else. Because we won't have taken the chance, we won't have taken the opportunity now. Because we're going to grant you, we grant you. You, I mean, again, I understand our position.
I do. I do. And I'm used to, in the township I represent, we have a connectivity plan where we've planned throughout the township where there aren't barriers and bridges and things like, where's the feasible location? Maybe across the street of has more room even because we run into the house at the Sisters of Mercy property. I don't see anyone taking that down. I understand your goals. Lower Gwinnett has always been about trails and connectivity. So I get it. I just can't give it to you with this project.
I understand people walking. But on the other side. So at any one time, they are out of the building. On one side, you know, they are in the building with doors locked and things like that. Once we get out of the public. The two ball fields. All that.
That's a, that's a very fair point. Is there, I can't tell from the picture. Is there a lot of vegetation on the Sumney Town?
Heart, yes. And, and a fence.
Okay.
Yes. It's not as dense as Evans Road. It's not foresty, but there's a lot of trees plantings. I don't know. We should be able to do Google Earth at these meetings so we can show you stuff better. Okay.
Yeah, there are trees along there. I might argue that they're not worth saving, but there are trees.
Are they not native species?
They're not in good shape.
They're not. Okay.
So, you know, I'm at a I'm trying to decide where to go with this, but I understand your argument. You're putting in a, an addition and you don't want the extra expense of addressing what we might want as a township for future connectivity. So I get that, but I, I am not sure what is an alternative to what we're talking about in terms of transit, either around your property or along the edges or whatever it might be. I don't use that, that trail system. So I'm not familiar with how somebody who's, I know there's a sidewalk in front of the university and it's a lovely sidewalk. And it goes up to the stop sign, I believe, the entrance to the university. And I'm, I'm sure that was a big expense to put in and maintain. It would be lovely if it could continue, but yeah, if there is a trail system that would allow people to transit from the end of that sidewalk around your property to say Evans Road.
So the trail that's there now can get you from the entrance on Sumney Town to the entrance on Evans and meander through the university and it connects over to Trewellin. So that's what we have today.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to go more in depth with the other waivers, or do you want to address any alternatives, I guess, to, to the trail and the curbs? I know that it is a significant concern for this board. So I don't know if you want to provide any other alternatives. I mean, I, I respect the fact that you came and indicated that, you know, it is cost prohibitive. Is there any alternative that you're willing to pursue as it relates to addressing it other than asking for the waiver?
I cannot think of one. I mean, we've looked at the Evans Road frontage. We've looked at the bridge that would be necessary to get over that, the amount of trees that would have to be taken down. And then there's no way to get around the Sisters of Mercy property. So we would just be putting a trail in for like six houses because you have to get to the Evans driveway and we, and that was part of the conversation with the planning commission. It's this chunk that won't have a connection to Evans. But if you can get to Evans, then you can take off through the trail system all the way through the township park. But to put that much.
Get to Evans though past the school.
Yeah, at the university entrance. That's where you, that's where you would start at Evans, that driveway. So we recognize that there's a gap along Evans for those people who live on Evans. But the bridge alone is a hundred, a couple hundred thousand dollars, let alone the frontage improvements and the tree replace, the tree removal, then the tree replacement and the trail. I mean, it's just cost prohibitive. So I don't know. And anything else would cut through the property, which isn't an alternative at all either. And the trail already cuts through the property. It just has that gap. Evans Road is really where the gap is. Sumney Town, there's a little bit of frontage there.
Okay.
It's not as not as problematic as the Evans Road frontage, obviously.
Could you maybe present us with a map with this more clearly laid out so we can see what you're talking about in terms of transiting around your property?
I'm sorry, you mean the trail, the existing trail system?
Yeah. Is that indicated on this map?
It is.
Yeah, the red ones.
This one has like the trees and
that has the red outline?
It was linked to.
This is, there's.
It's the first page, but then I just kept zooming in. I think it's the first page of the
It's this one.
I hope we gave you the right pages, Jamie.
No, it's not that.
Is it an overall, like an aerial?
You don't have an aerial?
It is. Yeah, the one that I'm looking at, I think. That's, that's what I'm zooming in on. I'm trying to, this is my, that's how I zoom. Like, that's what I'm doing. I'm just trying to figure out if we, if it's Sumney Town, you know, were you, I'm not familiar with the Sisters of Mercy property, but you're saying that even if
This is they.
I know they can only go to here, but in the future, you know, it, or as the property stands, the Sisters of Mercy property, would there ever be room to continue that trail? Or Tessie, you said the house sits like basically right?
It's right on the road.
That's what I'm just wondering, feasibly, because it's.
Diagonal, I mean.
Yeah.
There's a future development of Sisters of Mercy, you could make that up.
Right. Or a crosswalk or something. Or a crosswalk or something. I don't know. Oh yeah, I think Tessie didn't have it in front of her. Oh yeah, yeah, I have it on my, on my iPad, but Tessie needs to see it, I think.
I saw it earlier today, but it would be good to put it up so we could all look at it.
You could do a diagonal. You don't have to go on. There's ways to get the trails connected if Sisters of Mercy.
When you say connected, you need to get to the corner.
It may not even be to the corner. I mean, it may be.
Like eventually if there's a trail all the way down Sumney Town Pike, I guess. Is the
Do you have a plan for a trail all the way down Sumney Town?
Well, we are working on planning.
Probably know that there's going to be some, be significant development right down the street.
Right, the other direction.
No, right down the street.
Up this way?
Other way.
Yeah, yeah, down this way.
Right. And, and that development's going to add a lot of traffic to, to Sumney Town Pike.
Which always makes me pause about why we want to add pedestrians to heavily traveled roads. We normally avoid them.
Because there are no sidewalks. So we have to do something to protect the pedestrian.
People are going to walk.
The answer is, is you've got to stay off of Sumney Town Pike. That can't be the answer. Because if you think from, you know, the vegan property on Sumney Town Pike, all the way up to 202, that, we can't say that won't be welcome. I mean, we can't, we, we can't have that.
It goes down through here.
Big swath of road.
And there's access to that trail. System.
Right.
And cuts through all through the campus, connects all the buildings. And then back here where Alexandria Hall is, I mean, I usually cut through to get to Trewellin and you can get on that trail and then it goes all the way up and down.
So what I'm interested in right now.
Is off the page.
And they come here and they want to get over here.
They have to go all the way around. Yeah, they can go up here and get up. Yep.
So what the tap is, is from the, yeah, this and then this.
Correct. And this is the culvert and this is another culvert. These would require bridges and this is heavily treed.
Yeah. I guess it's possible someday to have a pedestrian crossing here and have a sidewalk on the other side.
I think that's, I think that's where Mike's going.
But yeah, what we really do as a township need to consider long-term plans for connectivity and sidewalks.
Oh, that's a good idea. Neil. Our solicitor has an idea. Neil, do you want to?
If you're not willing or able to build it now, would you be willing to offer easements so that the township could build it in the future?
Where? Along both frontages?
Sure.
I think that's beyond. And I'm sure we'd need to go to the board.
Do you have an easement or you have a agreement?
Are you talking about the multi-use field or the one on Evans? Okay, yeah, I just want to make in that square. Okay. I'm not familiar with that agreement. I'd have to, I don't know. I'd have to check. And that kind of quite well, um, one of our waiver requests was to not offer for dedication, the ultimate right of way because Evans is PennDOT and PennDOT never wants more than what they have.
Right. Sure. Do it all the time.
We just did it with Bedlam Baptist. We just It's something we'll definitely have to talk about because standing here, the three of us don't have that power. So
You know, we just sprung it on you, but again, we're trying to find a solution.
I, I appreciate that.
And with an eye towards getting you the expansion that you want without having to go out of pocket today for something that you couldn't do, you couldn't, and I'm, I'm hearing you. You can't do the expansion and do all of the things that are required in our land development. So take it back, I think, and you know, we're not saying we're going to, we're going to build a trail tomorrow, but
You could not grant one.
It's, it's, it's something that we want to do in the township so that all of the trails connect. Oh, I, I, I totally understand. But there's no, and, and again, the safety of the students is paramount. But right now, just, I don't, I, I'm, I'm asking, I don't know. Is there a fence on Evans now?
No, no.
So anybody can literally just walk onto the fence. Okay, so the trail's not going to, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, but there's no, okay, I got, I got you. I think maybe take it back and have that discussion make sense and then
Okay.
What are the trails?
Eight feet usually. You could probably narrow that down a little bit.
Well, we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
And I'll report back to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's just see if it's possible.
All right, we'll try and
Yeah.
I know that we took up some of your time with your presentation. I think that we reviewed the waivers. Did you want to give any specific?
If you don't want to talk about them, I don't want to talk about them. But if you want to talk about Okay.
Yeah.
So the street trees. We calculated the number that are required and went out in the field and located them. So the number matches what's required. But we want to use the existing vegetation. They're clustered and not along the frontage. In particular, this Evans Road area, that's the area where the spectators watch the games. So that was the specific reason here why there's openness. Um, but we meet the requirements with using the existing trees. They're clustered.
You know, you want to use the cluster as opposed
And we want to use the existing street trees in cluster formation to meet the number required by your code.
So I think just one supervisor. I think maybe what you're asking for is leave Evans Road alone.
Is what, leave Evans Road?
No trail, no trees.
Correct, no curb. Yep, that's all her, that's her waivers.
Maybe find a way to use it. It's what I'm thinking. This is again, just one supervisor, like, like you don't want the trees.
Well, we have
You don't want a tree.
Well, we have the trees. That's the point.
You don't, you don't have the trees. You're, you want to, you want to change how the trees are required to be to be examined under our land development laws, but you want to make them clusters. I, I hear you, but you, you don't, you don't meet the requirements of the of land development or you wouldn't be asking for a waiver, right?
Well, it's a partial waiver. We meet the required number using the existing trees in their existing formation instead of planted, you know, of how many? Yeah.
How many, I didn't even just
Yeah, but the number is there and we want to specifically keep this area open for the ball field use. That was our reason there. It's tight there and that's where people sit with their chairs and watch the game. So the trees would interfere with that. And all of this is already treed along the frontages and here. So it's really just this pocket right here.
I mean, it's pretty dense on some of it.
Yeah. And as you go down Evans, starting about here, it gets pretty dense along that whole frontage.
So the reasoning is just to allow baseball to continue.
Yes, without the plantings there, right?
I appreciate.
So
Just to the baseball field in totality, that area is a hundred feet, a little bit more.
What do you think, Bob? How long of an area are we talking about without trees?
From home plate to home plate. Probably 300 feet.
Yeah, right to where those trees start.
Is, is, is there any way to move, I'm, I'm sure you don't want to hear this, to move the ball field away from Evans Road a little bit?
To, to move the ball field? No, then it gets closer to the addition. It is being redeveloped because that'll be a construction staging area. So it's going to be regraded and rebuilt. But we don't want to bring it any closer to the building.
You're reskinning the field and re, redoing it completely.
Right? It's all being reconstructed, yes. That's going to be the construction staging area.
Constructed, is there some way you could go ahead and add trees then?
There's not enough room, right? This is Del Markwood. He's one of our board members.
Well, I was just going to make a recommendation because the way the field's laid out, we had to turn it because of the, the outfield was coming up against the new addition. So we had to turn it. It is plausible that we could put in five to eight trees off of, off the entrance drive of Evans, that going down Evans. We could probably put in five to eight trees along that area, but the rest of it remain open until you get to the current batch of trees. So that you'll have some new trees along the edge there, but we can't put it all the way down there, especially if, if we end up offering some easement for the trail because now you're putting trees where
We heard about the 20 feet.
Gotcha. It gets tricky.
There's a trail and we're going to be 10 feet and then we're going to add trees. We've taken your 20 feet. Understand?
So there is, but it's not impossible to put a couple of trees down at the end, past the entrance to the school driveway there. Riley and coming down towards the home plate, we could put a couple of street trees in there, but then have a little bit of a gap. Then you're fully treed all the way down Evans from that point on. Yes. I mean, we could put in five, maybe eight trees there and still we have to talk about the easement component for a trail because we don't want to interfere with that spot, but that's plausible.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, no, I'm following it and I get it. Totally, totally understand. I'm just trying to find a creative solution to make it work.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Was there any specific questions about any waivers that anyone else had? Rather than have Ms. Young to go through the entire list? I thank you so much for your time. Unless there's anything additional you have to add, I think work with Neil.
Right, I'll work with Neil and hopefully see you in two weeks at your next meeting. Okay, great. Thank you.
Just before you walk away, is there any public questions or comments related?
When do you want to get started? I know, I know.
Did they ever give me time? No.
I, I, I understand. You want to get started like right away, right? I mean, September, okay.
How do you get time? I never get time.
Take it off to September, but it's good to know that normally we are usually working with them.
Yeah. Well, we have outside agency approvals to work through and so we have things to do. Okay, great. We'll see you in two weeks. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda, we have consideration of request for a 60 day extension of expiration period. Resolution 2022, 29 to pay fees and post escrow later to the Wissahickin School District approval for their turf fields. I think that there was a memo that was included in the management's report that kind of goes over the reasoning for this extension. Are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public? The recommendation from staff was to take action to extend the 60 days to the Wissahickin School District to give them additional time to get their financing in order. I'm going to make that motion to approve the 60 day extension. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Next up is the discussion for the tax credit for volunteer firefighters. And this has been a topic that we have discussed at length. A memo was included in our management report by our township manager. I'm going to turn it over to our solicitor to give us a brief overview.
Well, this is a discussion that's been going on for some time. The board has the option for volunteer firefighters to encourage greater participation to provide either a credit against the earned income tax or a real estate tax credit. The real estate tax credit's obviously problematic if someone doesn't live within the township. There's also, there are also some municipalities that have done stipends for volunteers. That's also a little more problematic. But as you can see from the staff memorandum, from Mimi's memorandum, what North Wales Borough does and what Upper Gwinnett Township does for their firefighters.
So we have before us, I guess, to take into consideration this stipend as it relates, not stipend, this tax credit. Take into consideration our recommendation from our staff was an earned income tax credit with a maximum of $1,000. And to work with our, our two our two communities, our two firefighting communities, Wissahickin and North Penn to determine the criteria that they would meet to become eligible. I guess, is there any questions or comments, discussion from the board? I think what stands out from me, or it stands out to me is that the small number of actual firefighters that may benefit from this tax credit. And I know that not that much that we can do about that.
I, I did check with the two fire companies. So North Penn said right now there are three Lower Gwinnett residents who are volunteers. Wissahickin said they, there's eight to 10 Lower Gwinnett residents now who are volunteers was with, with Wissahickin, but not sure if all of them would necessarily in the end meet the criteria for being an active volunteer. So at the high end, eight to 10.
Okay.
Well, I guess one of the hopes also would be this would incentivize people to be volunteered. So while the numbers fall down, maybe helps with owing the ranks of firefighters that serve as the I, I'm for.
Yeah. And I think they were going to, uh, the Wissahickin Fire Company was going to talk to Upper Dublin even because some of the firefighters live in Upper Dublin. So but they were going to, you know, branch out and try to make sure people are covered with this.
And Ambler Borough, I think, yeah. Ambler Borough, I think would be the big.
Yeah. Yeah. So I, I think it's a, a good starting point to, to help us at least show our appreciation for the firefighters who are all volunteer. So I would agree to passing this.
Any other comments? Suggestions, discussion? Any comments or questions from the public? So what we could do is to proceed by requesting that our solicitor draft the ordinance. It does require 30 days advertising prior to the hearing. And this is the rec 172 that requires that legal notice. Make a motion to instruct our solicitor to draft that ordinance. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
And, and just so the board knows how, when, when the, we bring the ordinance to the board, we'll also make sure that we've worked out with the two fire companies what the criteria is. I think typically you would do that by, you would adopt that by resolution so that going forward, it's easier to change it. And that's the criteria for determining who is an active volunteer, who'd be eligible for the tax credit.
Yeah, I'd actually put some criteria in the original ordinance. So that might be a place to start.
Yep. Okay. And I included what North Wales has in place right now based on, you know, what they worked out with North has in place right now, based on, you know, what they worked out with North Penn. So we probably, you know, pull from what, what Neil has and what North Penn has and there's other municipalities too, and just make sure the two both fire company, ideally that it's the same criteria for the fire company for, in Lower Gwinnett and that everybody's comfortable with it.
Yeah, okay. Thank you so much. Um, next up, we have the proclamation to celebrate Arbor Day, which is April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. And as part of the Arbor Day Foundation's Tree City USA program. The proclamation is before you, it was included in our manager's report. Do we have to vote to approve the proclamation? Do I need to read the entirety of the proclamation? Very good.
I like the part that says whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual and that we plant trees to gladden the heart. So I will make a motion to accept proclamation.
I'll second that emotion. All those in favor? Motion is carried, thanks.
She's such a witty bunch, you know? We are fun.
I'd like to thank Jamie for following through and, and ensuring that we got our Tree City designation, so thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you, Jamie. Next up is to authorize the opioid settlement fund agreement. Essentially, Lower Gwinnett is a part of Montgomery County. And we have been instructed that we could potentially be a party to the opioid settlement agreement and that we need to sign it as we have done in the past. So this is just to authorize me as the chair to sign on behalf of Lower Gwinnett Township the fund agreement for the opioid settlement. Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, if we, if we did this once before, did we get any monetary benefit?
I mean, I'll let Mimi answer more specifically, but I don't believe we did, and I think we did it three times before.
That's right, it's, yeah, and I checked with the finance department, we didn't get anything and the, the little bit of reading that, that I did about this, I think it's unlikely Lower Gwinnett's going to this time either, but I, it's and I don't quite understand the details here, I don't know if Neil has more, like somehow all of the municipalities signing on helps Montgomery County.
Yeah, there's an exhibit to the settlement agreement that has a very restrictive list of what you can actually spend the money on. And if it doesn't fall squarely within that list, they're not going to allocate funds to a municipality. That's part of the overall settlement.
But so where does the money, does Montgomery County get a benefit then?
There's an allocation to, I think, most counties in the Commonwealth under the settlement. Yeah. And the list of defendants seems to keep growing. So that's why more money comes in.
Is, is there a possibility we would ever have the required request to obtain some of the funding?
I think we would have to, and I don't want to speak out of turn, Neil, I think we would have to be providing a service that directly impacted individuals who
Who are addicted?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or who have a, you know, substance abuse.
Yeah, I think it's exhibit E to the settlement agreement, if I recall correctly, that has the list of what the money needs to be spent on.
We're going to hold you to that.
And it, the counties in Pennsylvania are, it's the level of government that's either providing or funding drug treatment and, you know, addiction treatment, things like that, so it, it makes sense that the money goes to the county level, we're not going to start providing the services. But by signing the settlement participation agreements, we are bolstering Montgomery County's claim, I guess, to their, to a share of the money. So we're just helping the county be able to get a little bit more funding to help Montgomery County residents.
And that could also help Lower Gwinnett residents.
Certainly.
Who need those services yet.
Any additional questions from the board? Any questions from the public? I'd like to make a motion to, um, to authorize the opioid settlement fund agreement, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you so much. Next up is the authorize the contract with Sewer Specialty Services in the amount of five fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars for cleaning, televising and repair of our sanitary, sanitary sewer lines. I think our engineer provided us with a memo that kind of outlined some of the activities that they would do. And that they are an active co-star contract and, and it would be completed in accordance with the provided co-stars pricing. Are there any questions about the sewer specialty service and the cleaning, televising and repair of our sewer lines? No questions from the board?
This is just a portion, right, Jim? Every year, it's just a portion of this.
Yeah, we, so the end of last year with Sewer Specialty Services, we, we did Rhodes Hoover Houston Knight Marion. So we're going to finish that development with Brookside and Francis, and then from there, we're going to move to the Village of Penlin with, with Wissahicken, Truellen, Gwinnett Avenue. We picked those areas because they're the oldest sewers and the most likely to be damaged and in need of repair.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the public? Seeing that, I would like to authorize the contract with Sewer Specialty Services, make a motion to authorize the contract with Sewer Specialty Services in the amount of fifty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars for the scope as defined in the memorandum that was provided by our engineer, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Um, next up is to authorize the purchase of audio and visual equipment from Delco Solutions LLC in the amount of seven thousand, four hundred dollars for the caucus meeting room. We did get a memo from our assistant township manager that kind of went over some of the challenges we as a township have faced with utilization of our large meeting area as well as the small meeting areas and some ways to remedy that, which would include HD installing an HD conference room system with two hanging microphones that would eliminate the need for a handheld microphone. And designating a laptop along with wireless keyboard and mouse for controlling that PC, the projected cost is seven thousand, four hundred dollars. It was not one of our budgeted projects for two thousand and twenty-three, but there are available funds. Are there any questions from the board?
Is the fishbowl connected with this? No.
No, we don't have any equipment in the fishbowl at all, just the, this is for the caucus room.
No, I know, it's the caucus room, my only question was what we wanted for the fishbowl and if we did cheaper to do it now with both of them as opposed to, and I'm not saying we want it. Just, I'm asking the question so we don't come back in a year and say we need it for the fishbowl and it's ten thousand dollars.
Is there, is there any meetings that are internally held that would need access to like?
You know who meets in there, zoning hearing?
Do they?
I've seen them in there.
Why don't they meet in the caucus?
They meet in there.
But they wouldn't need to like zoom.
Yeah, they don't even use it in here.
Do they ever use a projection or?
They don't, I mean, they don't use it for their hearing, like nothing is virtual for the zoning hearing.
I don't think we would need it in the fishbowl, I'm only raising it to just
Make sure we do everything at once.
We don't, we don't miss an opportunity, that's all, I don't think we need them.
Yeah, I, I, you know, it comes up from time to time, we're, we're staffs involved with it, I mean, to some extent, we just, we sit at our desks in our different offices when we all do that. It, there can be times, I think, at a staff level even where we'd all want to be in one room, but I, I don't think there's I think it's really going to be rare when you'd need two of those rooms, three of those rooms, because we could do it in here, we can do it in the caucus room. I don't, what do you think, Jamie?
I, I agree, just because of the location of the fishbowl being so central to everybody's like work area, like if you're going to have a meeting where you're, you know, you have like a TV going, a screen going, you know, people calling, like joining into the meeting, you're going to probably be over there where you're removed from everybody's workspace. That's just my thought too, yeah.
You might explain to the public what the fishbowl is.
It's a little conference room in the office.
Yeah, that's
And it looks like they're in a fishbowl.
Yeah, sorry.
I think that's a common term, isn't it?
I, I think along those lines though about like other improvements that we would want to make that maybe if while we have them here, it, it may be more cost effective.
I was going to bring that up.
In, you know, there's been discussions at the committee level about you know, it's, it's difficult sometimes to have committee meetings in here when it's just the committee members because it's difficult to speak to each other, but you know, when somebody's on Zoom, sometimes it's functionally easier, so I think it makes sense obviously to upgrade the equipment or install equipment in the caucus room so that we can have those more intimate meetings. But when, you know, when the public is attending, there's concern that's been raised by some members of committees that it might make the public feel a little bit uncomfortable coming and sitting in the caucus room as opposed to sitting here if they just want to attend and observe the meeting, if they don't necessarily have something they want to say.
To be like anonymous?
Yeah, to kind of be able to come and just observe. They don't want to be sitting at the table. And so when we did the the parks and rec with the engineers for our strategic plan and we had the various interested athletic groups come in, it wasn't by Zoom or anything, but we, we did it here and kind of did a round table here, but then there's still seating in the back for people if they wanted to attend. I don't know if there's a way to fit out this room or just get more microphones or something so that we could have people, you know, have an intimate committee discussion, but also be able to have the public attend and not feel uncomfortable.
It gives them the ability to have like hanging microphone.
Hanging mics or even
Have to ask.
Even just like a table mic that we can kind of put
Yeah.
Sit at the table so that then when the committee's talking, people who are zoomed in can hear, but we're not all sitting up here having trouble communicating. That, so while we're talking about, I, that, that doesn't discount, I think, the need for that room to have these capabilities, but there may be a way to outfit this room as well.
Yeah, I can check with them, I mean, they'll, they'll, obviously if this gets approved, they'll be out for that, but they'll also, they're going to be coming back out because we have a issue with the the one wireless microphone, they're going to be bringing the other one that we ordered two years ago.
We can get more microphone, like if there's a table.
Yeah, so they'll be out like within the next few weeks, so we can, I can ask them that when they're in here and let them look at the room and see what they think is the best idea.
Just one, one additional question that I had, and I'm asking for all of the board members up here on the dais. Can you each read these two screens?
No.
Can anyone?
I can read that one.
You can?
I can read them, but it's uncomfortable and I usually can't. This I can see, but I can see behind you Danielle that it would be very inconvenient. And I've always had this complaint that these two little screens are
Is it that the, and this is the question I was asking Mimi and Jamie. It looks like they might be really large computer monitors as opposed to like HD or the crispness. And I, and I was asking Neil because he's kind of more to the center where I am, like, does he see the crispness of? It's hard for me to read, and I realize I'm reaching the age where I might need some assistance, but
They're, they're very uncomfortable to look at.
I mean, they're new.
Increase the font size.
I mean, they're new, they came with this whole system, we had different screens in here before. So that, yeah, so they did replace these. I think it's more, I don't know that it's actually the monitor as it is the input, like that it's coming from this like this display, like, yeah, like if I plug something else in, it could be, yeah. But I'll certainly have them check that when they're here. Right, correct.
But so what, if, if we, the board, and maybe I shouldn't speak for everyone, are not utilizing these screens to help us through our program, wh- what purpose are they serving? We, we need to fix them so that they are a benefit to us as well as the audience.
I think the audience, you guys are all looking at this, right? You're not looking at the That's why I bring my computer because I can't read that.
Yeah, it, I, I felt for a good while that these were not useful as much as they could be if the, if they were as bright as the board behind us.
Okay, that was just a question that I internally had been wondering. So we have before us this authorization, I think. Do we want to, and I, from what I'm hearing from the board is we want them to look at additional things. But we feel that addressing the caucus room is fine as it relates to right now, and then you guys can come back if there's other recommendations.
That's what I would, yeah, that's what I would.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to authorize the purchase of the audio visual equipment from Delco Solutions, the amount of seven thousand, four hundred dollars for the caucus meeting room, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Installation and all that.
Yep. Is there, and there is a warranty, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't, I'm sure I don't have a, a part of this, but yes, there is, and then we of course have the the, it will go into our current service package that we
Okay, so let me cover that service package, okay. Next up is the miniature on March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three meeting, has everyone gotten a chance to review those minutes?
Yes.
Are there any questions, comments? Amendments?
No.
Seeing now to make a motion to approve the miniature on March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three meeting, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
I was abstained as I was not there. Thank you. Next up is the update from the staff on any municipal activities. I'm not sure who's taking it, is it you, Fred, the Pen Ambler?
Committee updates, but I don't know.
Did you skip?
Oh, I did, I, I didn't skip, did I? Oh, no, it is committee updates.
Liaison updates.
Okay, you guys want to go first?
None of, none of my committees met.
Congratulations. The EAC meets tomorrow? The HRC rescheduled their meeting? So we're good to go, right?
All right, I, I just want to congratulate the EAC on the battery collection and the, you know, that was a success. And then I also want to call out the two members who are liaisons, not only for the EAC, but also the Planning Commission, and they've been doing a great job, and that's Maureen Nun and Rich Feliga, so I'd like to thank them for their work to take the EAC ideas back to the Planning Commission.
Before we go too far past the EAC, I know that Earth Day is coming up, are there any activities that anyone wants to highlight about Earth Day related to the EAC? And if they're tweeting at the Ambler Earth Fest?
I think we have, Lower Gwinnett has a trail cleanup. Isn't that on Earth Day?
That is, on April twenty-ninth, it's Wissahicken Trail.
I think it's the twenty-second, it's the twenty-ninth.
I thought it was the twenty-second.
Sandy gave me this information to pass along, which was that April twenty-ninth, and then the EAC will have a table at Ambler's Earth Fest on the same day.
Okay.
Going on her notes, so.
It is, but I think it's in honor of the earth to clean it, clean up, you know?
And the joy that it brings everyone.
Yeah, the, well, the, the graphic online says the twenty-second, so we should just make sure.
I imagine the website's correct then.
Because
Given me the
The, and that is Earth Day.
Okay.
Yeah, Saturday.
But I don't know, we should double check and confirm.
So what we're saying is everybody visit our website to get the most up-to-date information, but know that Earth Day is coming.
And come help us clean up our trails on Earth Day or the next week, whichever.
So staff updates. Who wants to go first? Anyone? No one?
Pen Ambler Park, Jim met with Santino and they finalized the plan that Jim put together. So we were planning on starting in April, but we're probably going to push that back till May. Just better weather and whatnot for doing that work. We, when we actually pick the week, we'll let everybody know, it'll be on the website, we'll post something in the park that the parking lot will be closed, the park will still be open, just the parking lot won't be available to park in, so unless Jim wants to add anything.
And for everyone at home, this is Fred Dollars, Director of Public Works.
Fred, how long, sorry, before you sit, how long will that take? Okay. Okay, so about a week, maybe we wouldn't be able to use the parking, okay? Right, of course, of course, with the disclaimer.
Is that it finally once and for all, they need to be inspected again? Is that it finally once and for all, or do they need to be inspected again after you're done the work?
So, as long as it meets Jim's approval, our plans.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we need to pave the parking lot, which we're, we're anticipating happening in the fall.
So the parking lot will be unusable until the fall?
No, after Fred does his work, he's going to put it back as it is today, and then we're going to bid it to have it paved by a contractor in the fall.
Oh, I didn't know. So the, so the amount of time that the parking lot will be down. Potentially.
Three to five days.
Just three to five days, okay. Long time coming, this one. Okay. Any other updates? Thank you, Fred. Thank you, Jim.
Actually have a clarification, so I'm realizing in the long list of things that um, Sandy gave me. The township, she had it under parks, so the park and rec commissions, trail cleanup is on April twenty-second. With Sahican Trail, meaning the organization is having a cleanup on April twenty-ninth, so there are both of those weekends, as Janine said.
We were both right, yeah. Everybody wins.
Yeah. And while we're talking events, the um, Lower Gwinnett Little League Opening Day is Saturday.
Right, that was my supervisor comment.
We've moved, I'm sorry.
I have nothing to say now, Mimi.
You can always.
I tried to do as Sandy tells me to do, though. These are the next.
Any other staff update?
Um, we are having a little bit of a um. Website, refreshing up the website. Um, Bill's just adding a, a few different features that we don't currently have. He doesn't have it up yet, but he did send me a screenshot. Um, so this is like, on the screen is like the main billboard that this rotates, this top part, um, and. Before it was like lower on the page was um, these like helpful pages. Now they're just going to be tabs at the bottom of that billboard, so you don't have to scroll as far down on the page to see it. And then like news and announcements will be arranged like right underneath it with the calendar next to it, so it's like less scrolling.
Oh, nice.
Kind of just updates like the.
I love that calendar.
Yeah. Every day, do I have a meeting?
Will it look, will it look the same mobile, on the mobile app?
Um.
Or not like there's that, but you know what I'm saying, searching it on your phone?
It'll be enhanced on the, your, on the mobile um, format as well, yep.
Awesome.
And then just one other thing, we did get word today, or actually got it yesterday, um, the county has approved both extension requests for both grants, so.
Very good.
It's a day of happy news. Thank you so much. Any other staff updates? Anyone?
Just want to welcome Melinda Hardeman, our new finance director to our very first board. Now on, I'll make sure the supervisor comments are first on the agenda.
We need to approve all your comments. Joking, welcome, Melinda. Thank you so much. We wanted to make sure that we felt that you were welcome to our joyous meeting. Give a wave here on. You're on camera, wave. Linda is our Director of Finance. With that, has any supervisor comments?
I do not have any comments.
Okay, nor do I. Wow. Janine?
No, it's all been said.
Mike?
I don't have any comments. I just echo Mimi's. Opening day, Saturday. First game's nine o'clock. I will say credit to Parks and Rec, credit to Fred. The Little League is thrilled with the shape of the fields right now, and I told them. This is just the beginning, so we have a lot of great stuff planned. Come on out Saturday.
Just want to um, echo Mimi's comments and welcoming Melinda. Um, opening day is in a very exciting day, having had many children go through the baseball. I think it's going to be good weather.
It's really nice, beautiful.
So come out the opening day if you can. Thank you to Parks, thank you to Fred. Um, with that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, guys.
There'll be professional.